Calling to order the meeting of March 28, 2017, study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Current business. Any questions on the consent calendar? Seeing now, we have a presentation from the City Arts Commission. Mr. Heatherton, are you going to be leading this, or are you just going to be involved?
I'd like to turn it over to Chair Selich and Vice Chair Kerr of the City Arts Commission to provide the annual update of the City Arts Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heatherton, and good evening. Mayor Muldoon and members of the City Council. My name is Lynn Selich, and I'm the current Chair of the City Arts Commission. And thank you very much for having us here this evening to give you a very brief overview of what the Arts Commission has been doing. And there's some great things we want to show you, thanks to your support. We've accomplished a lot in the past year, and so I'm just going to briefly go over some of the highlights of the arts and culture in Newport. We believe that our efforts enrich our community through the arts and culture. And I'll review our programming. Performing arts has been really successful over the past few years, but especially in 2016. We had, thanks to being able to use the Civic Center green for our concert venue, we've had thousands of people attend our concerts, and we hit a milestone with the Pacific Symphony, of course, a world-class orchestra, where we had attendance of between, we estimate, four and 5,000 guests who enjoyed the concert. We had food. It was a highly successful event that included with the Pacific Symphony, a musical playground for about an hour and a half before the concert, engaging all the children, well, actually children of all ages, so that was highly successful. The next bit of programming that we want to go over is our visual arts. We have visual arts throughout the city, but in particular, we have our Newport Beach Arts Exhibition, which is coming up in June, and highly successful. The proceeds go to our Arts Foundation and the programming that we do throughout the year. And there's Mayor Muldoon and former Chair Arlene Greer. Our sculpture exhibition is becoming more and more popular with the dedication of Sphere 112 that's coming up, the rotating Sculpture Garden that is going into its thirth phase. We'll be talking about that in a little bit. But we have docent-led tours and all kinds of interactivity throughout the year with regard to our Sculpture Garden. Library exhibitions are always ongoing, very dynamic part of our programming throughout the year. We have rotating exhibits that come in and out. We have lecture series. It includes both, all kinds of mediums of visual art that is not only exhibited in Central Library, but in also other libraries and our community centers around town. And a big part of what we do is our cultural arts granting program, and that's where we grant back money to our partners in the performing and visual arts. And through their expertise and their level of artistic merit, we are able to present our citizens and our visitors with a level of arts and culture that we'd actually like to continue. And this is a list of our current granting partners. Everyone from Discovery Cube Ocean Quest, which is formerly Explore Ocean on the Peninsula, to the Baroque Music Festival, which is held at Rogers Gardens, our Balboa Island Museum and Historical Society on Balboa Island, our Improvement Association, which last year we partnered on the Balboa Island Centennial. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Festival Ballet, we'll have some images. Of course, Newport Beach Film Festival, one of our signature events throughout the year. We are a large partner with them, and we have events throughout the festival. And then the Orange County Museum of Art, we are responsible for their Free Fridays that they provide to our community. Yes, of course. And of course, Backhouse Dance, which we're looking forward to their presentation.
For example, Balboa Island Museum and Historical Society Lecture Series at the Central Library. I'm just picking that out because of no particular reason. Tell me the relationship between the Arts Commission, the Arts Foundation, Balboa Island Museum. What is the points of intersection?
So, out of our funds that the Arts Commission receives each year, we grant $40,000 to partners who, through their, you know, they're actually, I'll use the Pacific Symphony, and Michael talked about this, they have probably $10 million of private support that we benefit from when they come and perform in our city. So, for example, with Balboa Island Museum, they have programming that they then bring to us. So, we provide the funding, we underwrite the programming that they bring to our community. The Foundation, completely separate, is responsible for, they're a separate 501(c)(3) responsible for helping to raise funds that we would then put towards programming. And it kind of depends on our priorities from year to year. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. So, it's these organizations, so for example, now that I'm thinking about the Balboa Island Museum, the city does give the museum a grant for other purposes, however they use for their community programs. So, we're kind of funding them twice through the funds that come in, through various public sources come in.
Well, they probably, what my guess would be, because I just know what they do for us, is that they provide us with programming that is relevant to our venues and to our platform. Whatever other money they receive, I'm not sure how they use that, whether it's capital improvements or...
We send out an RFP to a large number of arts organizations throughout the county. They respond back with proposals, and as part of the RFP process...
Okay, into the microphone.
As part of the RFP process, we ask them to specifically identify how they would use this money in a program that benefits exactly Newport Beach. And so, there may be potential people who are applying for grants, who are also getting money for other purposes. But when we do the granting program, we end up with about four or five times the number of applications as we actually have the ability to fund. And then we rank them based on a range of criteria score sheet, including direct benefit to the citizens of Newport Beach, how effectively they're spending the money, and so on. And so, we end up getting 20 to 25 applicants, and we funded 10 of them this current year, and with a score sheet that uses a variety of criteria. And so, it's completely independent from the Foundation or from money that might be coming from the city.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor Muldoon, I can answer that question for you, Councilwoman Dixon. Since I sat on the Balboa Island Museum Board for several years, the money that they receive from the city in the form of, I believe it's $20,000 a year, allows them to keep their doors open, supports the cost of exhibits, supports the cost of staff, that in addition to the membership fees that they collect, all right? This is a whole different, this provides programming, okay, to the community, what the Arts Commission did. It's a whole separate thing.
No, I get that. Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, so in essence, in essence, all the support that all of these organizations are receiving, not only from our citizens, but their patrons are benefiting us, which is nice, because, and what I would, I would love to see us actually increase our arts granting, because then they provide the program. We don't want to be in the business of presenting and coming up with the programming. We would like to work with these organizations. That's what they specialize in. Each of them has a specialty. For example, with Ocean Quest, it's all educational. It's science-based, it's educational, it's talking about our bay, our oceans, and those things. There's a lot of artistic aspects to that versus Festival Ballet Theater, which is all about dancing and young people and the programming that they bring in for families. Film Festival, we all know that that's one of our big sexy events throughout the year that brings in world-class filmmakers, whether that's, you know, a premiere of a film or a budding, you know, documentarian. And so, there's a lot of different art forms that we're, we would actually like to bring in a lot more. We'd like to bring in the culinary arts. There's a lot more that we could bring in as our grant budget grows, and this is just an excellent example of those that we're partnering with now, but we'd love to see it increase.
Okay. Can I just ask a follow-up question? So, I know you're not representing the Foundation, but the thought occurs to me, if you would go back to that same slide, sorry.
Sure.
So, this is just your, I'm asking for your opinion. Could the Foundation be helping to raise funds? The arts purpose at Newport Beach Arts Foundation could help these organizations raise funds targeting for arts-related purposes that, to coordinate with the Arts Commission and the programming that you folks are doing?
Well, they each have their own development staff. So, Mike, do you have any thoughts on that? They each raise their own funding.
No, I know. That's good. Yeah. But with a eye towards the arts programming of their fundraising development activity. Just to have more of them being part of the raising of funds for arts programming that gets integrated into the Arts Commission programming.
Ideally, yes. I mean, a Foundation would be raising money on a few different tiers, but yes, that would certainly be a part of it.
That's true to me. Okay.
The more money we have for programming, the more we can...
Right. So, I'm just trying to, how you can multiply or affect, if you will.
Yes. Yes, and we are already receiving the benefit in a large part through the funding of these organizations. And what we give them is just a tiny little bit of their overall budgets. And, you know, we benefit, so it's kind of nice that, you know...
That's good. I like the partnership.
Exactly. So, I want this list to grow, and as our budgets grow, that list will definitely grow, and we'll just bring even more to the community. And going, you know, a big part of it, you know, I'm a marketing and PR girl, so I'm always looking at the media value of any story, and certainly, the arts in Newport Beach has a huge story to tell. This is just a little bit of the, I mean, to get the cover of a local well-known magazine is almost impossible in today's world. There's only 12 of them a year, even less with publications that only publish bimonthly. So, our arts programming here in Newport Beach has received significant media coverage, and that also translates into dollars. And I can actually, you know, there's actually a way that you can quantify the promotional and tourism and all of the things that media coverage provides for us. But we just wanted to touch a little bit on the significant coverage we've gotten in the last year or two, which I always like to see more of as well. And then, of course, important to all of us is our public-private partnerships. And a couple in this last year that I'll just point out is the extraordinary partnership we had with the Ben Carlson Memorial Foundation and the installation of the Ben Carlson Memorial Statue at McFadden Square. There were thousands of people there. It was a non-ticketed event. We worked really well with the Foundation to make a tribute that is going to be, you know, perpetually reminding people of his great sacrifice, and it's a beautiful art piece as well. The next partnership I wanted to bring to, as we mentioned earlier, is the Pacific Symphony. The Pacific Symphony has a program called Symphony in the Cities. They play in only three cities in Orange County, Irvine, Mission Viejo, and now Newport Beach. And we have all kinds of activities surrounding that, but it was really terrific, and Mayor Dixon, you were able to represent us at that concert, and it really, it's extraordinary when you stand up on that stage and you see 5,000 people out in the audience. It really was a magical evening of Tchaikovsky.
I agree with you. It was a wonderful, wonderful evening. A lovely evening weather-wise, and just a spectacular evening culturally.
Yes, and mark your calendars. We're having them back this year, July 16 is the official date. And when you work with a world-class orchestra, professional orchestra like this, it's really tough to get onto their calendar, because they have not only all the programming that they do, but then Maestra Sinclair's calendar. And so, just to get that date, we were really excited when they called us and said they had set it aside. So, everybody, mark your calendars, July 16. Oh, we'll send you tapes. And then, of course, as I mentioned earlier, the Balboa Island Centennial, which was really, really special to, for both residents of the island and those of us who live around the island. And the Sunset Years Bench is a good example of how we partnered to make that event more dynamic and to leave a permanent piece of artwork commemorating that time for them. And finally, our Cows for Camp, which is currently, the exhibit that is currently throughout town, primarily here in Civic Center. We have 14 cows. There's three at Jamboree and Pacific Coast Highway in the Back Bay View Park. We have one at each Civic or Community Center and one at each library, including here at Central Library. And I liked the picture at the bottom. I wanted to point that out. That was from the recent Sandcastle Contest that the fire lifeguard and police all engaged in last weekend, and they were hanging around by the cow, so we had to take a shot of that. And one thing I did want to point out with the Cows for Camp is that is a partnership with Ronald McDonald Good Time Camp for Kids, and those, it benefits the families and children of kids suffering from cancer, as you may know. So, it's a terrific partnership with them and Got Milk, who provided the cows. And finally, the last part of my presentation is, cultural tourism is really, really important to all cities and not just Newport Beach. And these are facts that we received from Visit Newport Beach. They did a study in 2016 that resulted in this information. Tourism supports 1,250 entertainment and arts-related jobs in Newport. It's hard to believe that there are that many jobs related to entertainment and the arts, but when you stop and think about it, when you consider all of the hotels and all of, you know, all of the venues we have around town, they need programming, they need content. 3% of the visitors to Newport Beach travel here specifically to attend a special event or concert, whether it's a jazz series, the Film Festival, our concerts on the Green. And finally, 8.3% of all of our visitor activities are arts-related. So, that's not a number to sneeze at when you consider all of the activities that we provide in Newport, that we're almost at 10% of what people choose to do here. And with that, I am going to hand it over to Commissioner Kerr.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. We promised the City Manager we would try to keep our comments to 20 minutes, which leaves me with three, so I'm going to move rather quickly through these, and I'll try not to read to you. So, premise, I'm not going to read what this says, but these are basically the guiding principles that we are using as we make expenditures for art and for culture. And essentially, we believe that art is a small but important part of a fiscally responsible budget for a city, and it provides a lot of depth and legitimacy for a community. And we think that the city's role is to be a supporter and convener of art. It has economic benefits, as Lynn just highlighted, but it also enriches and makes the community just a better place to live. And so, these are the guiding principles for us as we make decisions about what to do. For future programming, we really have two categories. We're going to continue the existing programs that Lynn went over and basically add to them, particularly the grant-making, because it's really a good way to leverage our dollars. When we put a little bit of money into a very large organization, we're getting the benefit of their huge budget, and our little bit of money buys an awful lot. And then, there's a range of additional initiatives that we are looking at prospectively for next year. We'll invite the council and the public to add to that list. Arts and culture are invaluable, but we have to pay for them. So, we would ask you to give us direction in three ways. First, there are funds that are currently allocated to public art in the General Fund and in Visit Newport Beach, which is TOT. Those are our current, and the next slide will actually show numbers. So, this is the action we're going to be requesting with the budget, and then I'll show you the numbers on the last slide. But first, we have money that's already basically set aside for art and culture, and we'd like you to direct us to spend that money. Second is, there's about $175,000 in the Balboa Performing Arts Trust Fund, and we would like you to direct us, the Commission, to spend that over the next four years, with a preference for activities in the Balboa area. And then, finally, there's a policy I-13, which has a significant balance in it, and this is really above the Commission's pay grade to decide what to do with this, but we'd like you to adopt a policy and then give us direction as to the expenditure of that money, which by the policy is set aside for public art and culture of a permanent nature. And we've been using that money for the Sculpture Garden, but we would like to get some concrete direction from council moving forward. And then, finally, current budgets and proposed budgets. The top set of numbers is the current year 16, 17 budget, and it is as accurate as we can make it, with the possible exception, that we raised $23,000 of private funds in this year, which I had assumed we were not going to be able to access until next year because the budget was already set in stone for this year. That may not be the case. So, it's possible we'll be using the $23,000 of funds currently sitting in our bank account in the current fiscal year. But if you look, you'll see in the current year, the funds that the Commission spent came from two places. General Fund, $127,000, and then Visit Newport Beach, $60,000. Visit Newport Beach gives us $150,000 every year to spend, so we didn't spend $90,000 out of our 150 for this year, and there's another 150 coming next year. You can see the categories of where the expenditures went into grant-making for $40,000, and you can read the rest of them. You don't need me to read those numbers to you, with a little bit for GNA and insurance. For 17, 18, if you direct us to spend the money that we are, that is allocated with our name on it, the first thing we'll do is we're requesting a general fund allocation that's actually $2,000 less than the current year. So, we're mindful of the budget imperatives. The unfunded liability for pensions in this city is real, and we get that, and we want to be responsible. That said, we think our little portion of the budget matters an awful lot and gets outsized benefits. So, we would request $125,000 out of the General Fund. And then, from Visit Newport Beach, we have $150,000 that comes to us every year. There's $90,000 of surplus from the current year. We propose for that 90 to set 50 aside as a reserve, which leaves 40, and of that 40 we'll use it over the next two years. So, if you look at next year, we have $170,000 to be allocated, which is the 150 of promised funds plus 20. And then, the third category is the Balboa Trust Fund, and the $43,000 that's there is approximately one quarter of the amount of money in that fund. So, we intend to spend that over four years. And then, finally, private sources, and this goes to Councilmember Dixon's question. We raised $23,000 this year through frankly, some heroic efforts of the Commission. We estimate we can raise at least that much next year, so we have $46,000 in the budget. But a couple footnotes. You asked about the role of the Foundation, and we've been discussing with the Foundation members how to enhance their ability to raise money. And the working conclusion we've come to is we're going to basically set up two different groups within the heading of the Foundation. One will be a worker bees group, if you will. Tendatively, I call them the art and action people, and they're the ones who'll be putting on exhibits and actively working with artists. The second group will be more traditional fundraisers, and those will be the trustees group. The trustees group, if we're successful, will actually be able to raise meaningful amounts of money, and that answers the question of can the Foundation assist with fundraising and future funding? And the art and action folks will continue doing what they've been doing, which is putting on great art programming within the city and being great volunteers that way. If you look on the budget for the second year, for the upcoming year, the final category is NBAF Admin, and that would be an administrative position, which would be lodged within the Foundation, so it would not add to the city's headcount. And that position, we expect to be self-funding after the first year. That would be the person who would assist the trustees with fundraising, with administration, and basically allow the Foundation to begin functioning effectively as both a volunteer group and as a fundraising group. So, and finally, the items under new programming. These came out of my imagination. They are not, have not been voted on by the Commission as a whole. When we actually go to be adding new initiatives or even increasing current levels of funding, those will all be discussed by the Commission as a whole and debated and voted upon. These were simply illustrative to give you a sense of where we think we could be spending additional funds and where there's great opportunities within the city. And with that, I thank you, and we're available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
Do I have a question? So, when we were talking about the funding sources, one of the references you made was that Visit Newport Beach sends money directly to you, and maybe this is a better question for Mr. Harp or Mr. Heatherton. My understanding is that the city, through its transient occupancy tax, which would go into the General Fund, has a contract with Visit Newport Beach that sends a little over $4 million a year. And as part of an amendment to that contract, Visit Newport Beach then sends back a certain amount of money on a restricted basis. So, it basically goes general fund money to another entity, but comes back as a restricted amount. But my understanding is that's not actually designated for art. It's designated for a broad amorphous public benefit of some kind. What's the language on that?
No, I don't recall exactly the wording. I defer to City Manager.
Mr. O'Neill, my recollection is the council, the council that enacted that pass-through never gelled on an idea for those funds to be spent. So, we could certainly welcome your input. It does need to be refined.
Okay. And then, as for I-13, the 2% public benefit, developer public benefit fees, I mean, one of the problems we've got, problems fiscally, maybe not problem out in the community, is that one of the discussions we've had is the FFP, as the rest of the council knows, we've had a study session on that, and there is clearly going to be a diminishing amount of developer fee money going into the facilities financing program. And we've had those discussions about what that means for, you know, Corona Del Mar Library, fire stations, et cetera. And so, one of the effects of I-13 is it moves money away from programs like that and puts it into the Cultural Arts and Facilities Fund as part of that 2% public benefit fee. And if I read the FFP correctly, Uptown Newport, the project itself, is supposed to generate over $800,000 to go into the Public Arts and Cultural Facilities Fund, as opposed to things like traffic mitigation or something along those lines. So, I'm wondering, is it your intention to use the I-13 money to continue to use it for the rotating Sculpture Garden, or is there another use that you plan for it?
Well, there's two answers to that. We have in the current year, $290,000 of expenses anticipated to complete Phases III and IV of the Sculpture Garden. And there's a request for that money to be taken out of I-13 that's working its way through the city, as I understand it. Beyond that, there will be a significant balance left in the I-13 budget, and we don't have any intention, we don't have any intentions with respect to that money. We are coming to you asking for guidance, and if the decision is made that you'd like that to go for public art and culture, we would love to take the lead on placing that, but we don't have that currently budgeted within, with any of our categories.
Okay.
Altona Dixon.
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to thank you both. I know you've worked really hard. I want to thank you and congratulate for your hard work. You've reorganized the Commission. We brought on some new members this past year, year and a half. I'm very pleased with that. I congratulate your hard work, the symphony, all these community programs. And I do know you're working hard to generate private support, so I commend you for that. I was surprised, just as you were talking about the I-13 money, the development money, am I missing, is it not, you have nothing in here that you're not touching it at all? Is that, am I understanding that correct? Because there's no line item for that.
Within the budget, we did not put in any expenditure for the Sculpture Garden, nor to be put in any I-13 funds.
But how will that be paid for? I thought we've paid, remind me, we've paid for the Sculpture Garden, Sculpture Garden is funded through Phase IV, III? Remind me.
Phases III and IV are, have been, I believe, approved, Tim, or, they've been approved, and so, the funding request is working its way now through the system. The total of those, of those Phases III and IV is $290,000.
And that's going to come from the I-13 funds?
That's going to come from I-13 money. There will be a balance when, there'll be a balance of a, I don't have the number in front of me.
Couple hundred thousand?
About $191,000, I think, in the I-13 after payment of those expenses. We have not articulated any expenditure for that money, nor for any future phase of the Sculpture Garden.
Okay. The other point that you made about reconstituting the Newport Beach Arts Foundation and creating the arts and action, I think is a splendid idea, and the creating more of a development arm of the Foundation, reconstituting, I mean, I 100% agree. I'm pleased to see you moving in that direction, and I'm sure there'll be more reports on What does give me concern, and I know you and I have talked about this, so this won't be a surprise, is that the private support numbers are very low right now, and I just want to go on record to say that I expect them to grow. I want you to, my personal opinion, I'd like you to think big, but think big in terms of development as well as programming, because your sources are all public sources, except for the Balboa Village Theater Foundation, which is very special money, and I'm grateful that you have it. I would just like to see, and I've said this before, 50/50, 70/30, 80/20, some substantial amount coming from the community as validation that they value this type of programming to serve our community. I believe it's there, and I know you're working on it. I just want to put that into the public record, that I know the community is very generous and can be supportive of the good programs, the wonderful programs that we have today and yet to come, but I would like to see that percentage increase. Thank you.
Councilman Hurdman.
I think the first thing I want to do is just compliment you on your presentation, Mike, and Lynn, and Arlene as well. You know that I'm a strong supporter of the arts. I use... I used to, I said during the campaign that the arts are often what kept kids in school, the business I was in for 38 years. I'm very also pleased to see that you've worked a great deal on your reorganization as far as the foundation and the guild and/or the Arts in Action concept that we talked about. And your budget reflects that. Very encouraged with your work and very supportive of it. And I'd like to recognize these ladies who are sitting behind you, Arlene, who make up that foundation right now and just publicly thank you for bringing art and culture to our city as you have done. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm very impressed with the leadership of, of the Commission. And you two have, I think, just do a terrific job and have breathed life, more life into it. I'm some, aligned with Councilmember Dixon's comments. I would like to certainly see the arts flourish and I think the foundation, as you described, to split it off and get rolling. I am convinced that you can make a compelling case for gifts from the, from the, from our public, which will be a reflection of the interest of the public. And then, in my view, the city, we, we can add more to that pile as we see the interest is there and the demand is there and there's a real partnership. And I think that's, on several fronts, more and more of that we need to do as a city. So, but I think my main point is, I, I think the leadership, the way you've expressed this and laid it out so clearly, it's, 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 it's great. Thank you.
Staff, how much is in the I-13 currently?
I believe there's a little bit over $431,000.
And when can we expect a request to use these funds for the Sculpture Garden?
A contract is currently going through the city attorney's office. I think there's some loose ends that need to be tied up before it goes to council.
Could you give me an estimate?
The first meeting in April.
Okay, so this year.
Correct.
And so, if roughly $290,000 were to be approved for the Sculpture Garden and we were to add that to the request for roughly $300,000 in operating, subtract the private support of 400, so we're north of half a mil, half a million dollars. And I think that's my concern. I think great, great programs, exciting to see how engaged you are and the community's becoming more and more engaged. One thing I, I think is less exciting is just how large the budget is growing so quickly. So, I would like to see the I-13 account spent towards capital improvement projects or put back into the general fund. I don't think this large amount should be spent when you consider the other large amounts. I'm happy to see Visit Newport Beach contribute, continue to contribute $150,000 with a $240,000 cash on hand still at your disposal, plus the Balboa Fund of $175,000. When you add all that up plus private contributions, you have a, quite a large pool to use for some of your projects. But I'm concerned that this is just getting too big, too fast. So, what, that would be the, the direction that I would, would give to staff, would be to limit some of these expenditures. Any other comments from the council? All right, seeing none.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments from the public?
Michael McGruch from Arts Commission, and I will talk about money and art. I think the, the key for you guys is to see engagement. Because engagement builds community. A strong community is important for this, for this town. It's a bedroom community and art provides that. You know, spending, like you said, you know, you don't want to go blow up the budget. But if you spend $20,000 on two little art shows and nobody shows up, I'd rather spend the 60 on the symphony and have a real social engagement with everything and really do something for the city. And actually, it shows, you don't need to have, oh, how many people provide us money to see the engagement? The engagement is there. And those would be my guidelines, if I would sit up there, to see where do I get the most engagement for the budget? I'm not saying, you know, go out crazy on the budget. But I think that's the key. The engagement is key, not what the Arts Commission thinks should be done, you know, you know, high falutin art or low falutin art, whatever brings the engagement to the citizens of Newport Beach. That is the key. That brings community, that brings togetherness, and it brings, I mean, it's just joy and happiness. I think absolutely what I see for years with the council, you guys are the visionaries. You're not here to run the city just, the staff does that. But you're the visionaries. And I think that you need to make a real look inside and think, what do we want, to what end do we want to have art? And it's okay to say, hey, I don't want the art at all. But you gotta look as a council, what you, in what direction do you want to go? Do we want to be, performing arts are very successful, so do we want to be the city of performing arts? Or do we want to be, you know, I don't know, an exhibition, city of exhibitions? Or, we have a lot of diversity in this, in this, in this town, so perhaps it's a diversified art in every district. But you guys need to know if you want to be associated with the arts, which is like working a lot with arts organizations, or if you want to go deep into it and do arts education, applied art. And, and you need to feel if that's right or not. Not saying they have to, you know, teach you why art is valuable. They have to prove constantly why art is valuable. You are the leaders, you are the visionaries. They help you doing that, but you need to make the decision. You, you cannot put that position on an arts commission or on a, you know, on the library or anybody else. If you feel that art is important, then private people will also support you than organization. Because when they say, they made a commitment, they will do this in the future, they excited, they're gung ho of doing that, then, oh, I'm a big company, I'm Pimco or whatever, I'm, I'm gonna be on the thing. Thank you. Oh, 90% of working artists are still hovering around the poverty level. So, I want you to consider that too. So, there's, needs to be strong work with the art, with the artists too.
Thank you.
The money needs to trickle down, otherwise we have no artists.
Any other, any other public comments on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back. I just added up some of these numbers. If we were to approve the request for $125,000 from the general fund, combine that with the $150,000 that comes annually from Visit Newport Beach and free up the $240,000 cash on hand that's accumulated from Newport Beach, Visit Newport Beach, and then allow you to spend the $175,000 from Balboa, we have roughly $690,000, pretty substantial. If we were to add the request for the Sculpture Garden, $290,000, we're looking at a budget of $980,000, just roughly a million dollars. So, I, I just, I want to see first if staff has any comments before I ask sort of for a straw poll about where to head this, what direction to send this in.
No, Mr. Mayor, your, your council's comments would be helpful in terms of bringing something back to you with, for an action item.
Thank you. So, I won't go as formal as to give a motion. I think that most of the requests of the Arts Commission is going to be granted, but I want to see if, if any council members are interested in expressing their opinion regarding the I-13 account. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you adding up all these numbers. It would have been helpful to look at that, the total revenue, if you will, loosely describe revenue inputs that come in, so we could look at the total picture because that is a significant number of 980. My opinion about the I-13 funds are that because we do have more demands placed on, in our FFP, our Facilities Financial Plan, which is sourced primarily through development funds, development, as we know, has declined significantly and going forward over the next 10 years, it's, it's just trickling. So, I would be supportive of maintaining that, and, and allocation to be determined at a future public debate about it, but I would like to maybe cap it. It's, I think it got up to about $500,000 in the last year or so and now you're working against that on the Sculpture Garden. That seems like a good number. I don't want, I, I do support keeping an allocation in there, but to cap it, so that's good planning on our, so we can plan knowing that that money from future development projects. I'd be open to other figures, but just to put a figure out there. So, I guess to answer your question, keep the policy, but look at a capped number. And also with Visit Newport Beach, maybe we need to look at, looking at a capped number and then you spend, they spend against that number. Again, I want to make the point, you're doing a great job, the program is great, I just want to see more skin in the game by the community. Now, I know that's a controversial statement because people will say, well, we pay property taxes. Well, we only get 16% of your property taxes back and there are a lot of demands on that. I just think that the community benefits tremendously from your wonderful programming. I, I've seen it, I touch, I feel it. I'm grateful for the foundation and how they really catalyze the community. I want to sustain it. But I'd like to see, particularly given going forward, the demands that we're going to be having on our general fund budget, ways that we can augment it with community private support. So, that's my long answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, am I allowed, what's a proper format to do essentially a straw poll on this?
Well, it's, it's not on for action, it's just on for study session to get comments from the council. So, as long as you're not taking an action, if you just want to get general input, it's fine, take a straw, straw poll. City clerk should note what the votes are for the, for the record though.
Sure, I'm just going to go down the line then. I don't want to be too formal, I just, I feel like you're not getting enough direction other than the arts are great, which the arts are great. So, Councilman O'Neill, would you clear to mind stating your, your thoughts on this?
Sure. The, I actually came and spoke to the Arts Commission before I was on council about my concerns about I-13's continuing viability, given the lack of development that's going on inside the city. And so, if I, to Mr. Herdman's point, mentioning the election, it was, I, I was on, I was actually in the middle between two people who said zero and seven figures. I take my kids to a lot of these events, so I, I'm going to be supporting continuing arts funding out of the general fund and hopefully seeing a, an augmentation. But I think I-13, the way it's been structured, it takes some of that debate out of the general fund discussions and also, given the enormous discussion about traffic mitigation issues, I think we've got to, we've got to take the funding and, and stop that discussion on developer fees versus non-developer fees and have it more general fund versus other general fund issues. So, my, my preference would be seeing the strong support coming out of the general fund and, and less so out of a developer fee, developer fee agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Pieter.
I agree with Mr. O'Neill. And I'm presuming that we'll get into the details in our policy subcommittee as we review all the council policies. But we're not funding libraries, fire stations, other things in the FFP with the developer funds, so I would put those as a higher priority.
Thank you. Do you feel you've already been, yes. Mr. Herdman?
I think I've already commented.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Mr. Avery.
Do you understand where I'm coming from? As far as a straw poll? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I'm, I'm okay with the general fund approach. I would, I, I think we need to work, or maybe an idea needs to come from the Arts Commission, but a way that the city can participate, maybe some matches for certain specific projects, depending on the, on the financial situation. But I would like us to consider some mechanism for us to, to match, you know, a gift to a specific project based on the council's decision.
Okay.
Some flexibility there.
Mr. Herman, do you want to clarify?
Yeah, I forgot to say something. I, I would like to have seen in this budget a figure that you anticipate raising through foundation work. I would like to have seen a target that you'd like to, that you'd like to reach. So, that might be included also. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd chime in with Councilman O'Neill and Potter. And I like the idea of a Councilwoman Dixon's cap idea. But I do have to throw in this, it's killing me, but I'm sitting here in this grandiose building and, you know, to me, no one's mentioning, mentioning it, but this, this project here that we sit in has a lot to do with why we're having to compromise now. And suddenly now to put it on my shoulders that, you know, I'm cutting or doing, you know, away with something because of fiscally being responsible, I think has a lot to do with our, our past council.
Thank you. And just, it sounds like there's, you have an indication of where we're going with this. I just wanted to reiterate that $690,000 over a couple year period, assuming continued support from the general fund and from Visit Newport Beach, is a lot of money. And everyone's aware of the projects that are desired by the community, whether they're the library in Coronel Del Mar or the unfunded pension liability. So, I think that with that in mind, this I-13 account needs to be revisited and reallocated. Any other, no. Any other questions from the council? I'm afraid to let you comment. Go ahead and comment though, because that's just the kind of council we should run here.
I'll, I'll be very brief. I'm, I think you double counted when you were doing the math.
Okay.
You, you counted, we have a $90,000 surplus that's in the current year, plus the 150 coming for next year, which is 240, and I think you counted that twice. So, I think your, your math was a little high. And then the second comment is on the Balboa Trust Fund, we, we specifically looked at the size of the expenditures in the year and said, jeez, we, we don't think we can responsibly spend this money. And so, we, we put that in on a four-year basis. And we, we did consciously weigh how big the budget was getting and whether we thought we could invest the money wisely. And we're certainly open to that discussion, but understand it was something that we really did look at closely. We, we didn't come in with a, with a bust, budget busting budget and say, gee, it doesn't matter. We really did look at it carefully. And in terms of the, the private funding, the reason we have an administrative position allocated for next year in the budget, that's a significant piece of the budget increase, is we have $75,000 set aside for a, an investment in, in an admin person who in years subsequent to that should be paying for him or herself plus raising money. So, that's where the solution comes from, to raising the private money. But if you look at where the growth in the budget is, part of it is adding a full headcount and part of it was, I think you double counted one of the years.
Okay, thank you. So, if I double counted, let's just, without getting into it, if I double counted $90,000 roughly, it's $600,000 still. So, I, I think it's, it's very substantial. And we have to look long-term, not just at the, the immediate request, whether it's Sculpture Garden or other programs, but the overall budget. Thank you. All right, do I see any other comments? I do not. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on this next item, I'd recommend that that be continued because I know you need some time for closed session and Katie, Katie I think is happy to come back when there's more time.
Very good, thank you. So, public comments on agenda and non agenda items, please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. In, in that closed session from the agenda, I see the only subject you have is the performance reviews of the three employees appointed by the council, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, and talking with Councilmember Dixon about labor negotiations with those same employees, which, which implies that you're considering making some changes to the contracts. Comment I wanted to make is, in those contracts, the public is told that the council may set performance goals for each of those employees. And I assume that in the closed session, you're, if you've done that, that you're discussing whether they met those goals or not and basing the- the new contracts on that. As I've said in past years, it seems to me very reasonable that the public should know what the performance goals are, so that we can have our own opinion of whether they've been reached or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, and I should be with you here. My name is Mike Joseph. I'm a resident of Newport Beach, and I'm here to introduce my great friend Steve Colwell, who's gonna present a project, which I'm excited about, which has truly monumental proportions, and one that I hope will garner your support. Steve and I have been friends since, since the sixth grade, pardon me, and have been friends all through high school. We parted company after graduating high school. He went on to SC to continue a, a family tradition of being a Trojan. I went north to Stanford to become an Indian, and then a Cardinal, and he calls me a tree. But that's neither here nor there. We got back on the same team when we volunteered for the Marine Corps, went back to Quantico for Officer Candidate School and basic training. Steve got out of basic school, second lieutenant, transferred over to Vietnam in late summer of 1967, picked up a platoon with the Fifth Marines, and after two months of a lot of combat, and after a very nasty mission, was, was very seriously wounded by a booby-trap mortar. He was medevaced along with three of his young troops, and after seven months in a, in a hospital, various hospitals, while he was recovering, thank God, he did recover. His last operation was actually eight years after his wound, so there was a, a long period of recovery from some very devastating wounds. Steve went on to be successful in the product development business, property development business, and mortgage banking. Since retirement, he's been very involved with the Marine Corps down at Camp Pendleton, particularly with the Wounded Warriors Battalion down there. So Steve, please. Steve Colwell.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thank you for this opportunity. As Mike said, I, over 50 years ago, I was a young Marine Corps infantry officer, and I served with the Fifth Marine Regiment. Here tonight, I represent the 1-5 Vietnam Veterans Association. I'm a proud Vietnam veteran, and we're an all-volunteer group. For the past three years, we've been working on building a memorial for the Vietnam veterans, the Vietnam War Memorial, at the north end of Camp Pendleton, at Camp San Mateo, the permanent home of the Fifth Marine Regiment. Our first challenge was identifying the dead Marines and sailors, corpsmen, who died over 50 years ago. We used the Kofeld Vietnam Casualty Database, we identified 2,706 Marines and sailors who died while serving with the Fifth Marine Regiment. I want you to remember in those times, the difficult time in our country, these men, they stepped forward when most men stepped back, and they served their country with honor, and they died. Our second challenge was getting together memorial design that fit in the memorial park, and had all the names and ranks of these young men who died. By the way, they're 18, 19, 20-year-old men who never had a chance of a life. This is the design, it has all the names, all the battalions who, who served, and, and the front is an obelisk centerpiece, which will recognize all the campaigns, and will also recognize the 14,481 Marines from all units who died in the Vietnam War. Then, that was, this memorial will reside next to the memorial, Operation Iraqi Freedom, and Operation Enduring Freedom, and across from the, the Purple Heart Memorial that was just dedicated, and will be next to the Korea Memorial, which is in design work now. We started, so our third, our third challenge was fundraising. 10 months ago, we started with 650,000, I'm sorry, $650,000, and we now have $190,000. And Dana Point Fifth Marine Support Group acts as our fiduciary for our funds, they're the best support group in the whole country. They support our Marines that are deploying around the world today, and they're holding our funds. We, I wanted to, I wanted to mention also about this memorial, that it will be on Camp Pendleton, on the Christian Methodist Turnoff, as you go onto the base that's open to the public. And I would encourage all of you to see it, and all you need's a driver's license at the guard gate. Not only does this memorial act as a remembrance and honor of these Marines who died, but it honors their families, and it validates for their loved ones the service and bravery in this country, and the homecoming they never got. When we, those of us who served with the Fifth Marine Regiment, the regiment is home. This memorial is exactly where it should be going, at, at the regiment there, next to Operation Iraqi Freedom, and those Marines who died.
You can continue, if you want to, just disregard the bell, if you'd like to keep speaking.
Pardon me?
You can continue.
I have just a couple more comments.
Sure.
On any given day, you can come to the memorial garden, and you will find an Operation Iraqi Freedom, an Operation Enduring Freedom. You will see wreaths, you will see medals, you will see letters, you will see beer bottles to these, all these men coming, they're still active duty, and some coming from all over the country. It's a place of healing for these Marines they lost in Afghanistan and Iraq. It will be the same here. This will be a place of healing for our Marines. And also, it provides a legacy for our Marines that are serving today, that are deploying, and will be deploying very soon. This is their legacy, and they take it very seriously. I ask, I ask as a, I get a little emotional on this, excuse me, but I'm, I ask as a individual, and as a city, and as a nation, that you, we pull together, and you join us in helping to build this memorial, and honoring these Marines and sailors who died over 50 years ago, and their families. I think that's all I had, but I, I did want to mention one other thing. We begin manufacturing June 1st, and we will pick up the Granite Manufacturing Company, Rock of Ages, we have a contract for $358,500. So we're getting close. And this memorial will leave Vermont probably March 1st. We'll escort it across the country, this is a national event. We hope Newport, the city of Newport Beach will join us in this event, they come across the country, and arrive at Camp Pendleton, and will be installed in the dedicated Memorial Day next year, May 28th next year. I want to thank you for your time. I'd also like to ask your support of $20,000 donation to our memorial. Thank you.
Thank you. If someone is watching in the audience, where would they donate? Or if someone, if someone were to watch on television or the audience, and they want to contribute, where would they do so?
Yes, you have a brochure in front of you there?
People in the audience.
Well, yeah, as, do you have?
Oh, they're watching on television.
How would they donate?
A website?
Yeah, thank you, okay, sorry. I couldn't, I, I'm getting my hearing aids in two weeks, by the way, so. They donate to, they make the checkout payable to Dana Point Fifth Marine Regiment Support Group, mail it to Terry Rifkin, President, PO Box 471, Dana Point, California, 93546.
And Mr. Mayor, the website is www.fifth, with the number five, fifthmarinesvietnammemorial.org.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do you have something else you wanted to comment on?
Well, I just wanted to add, I appreciate the, Newport Beach's support of the First Marines. I served with the First Marines as Florida Air Controller when I was in Vietnam at Cason, and I've been to a few of the functions for the First Marines, and I, this is a Marine-friendly town, and this is a good cause to get behind, and I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Sure, as thank you on behalf of the city, thank you for your service, and thank you for your time today. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Mr. Harp?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. The city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss Items 4A and B, including meeting to discuss the performance of the city manager, Dave Kiff, city attorney, Aaron Harp, and city clerk, LaLani Brown, and meeting with labor negotiator Diane Dixon to discuss labor negotiations with the council appointees. The city manager, city clerk, and city attorney will accuse themselves from discussions related to their employment contracts.
Thank you. We are on recess until the 7 o'clock regular meeting. Calling the meeting to order for the March 28, 2017, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you, Mr. Harp, is your report?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. There's no closed session report this evening.
All right, we're gonna have Council Mayor Potem Duffield lead us in the pledge.
You stand, put your hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and is Pastor Mark Whitlock here? Yes, welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to pray, if you would allow me to leave. Today is my mother's 87th birthday, and we're gonna have a wonderful time celebrating her life. Let us pray. I thank you for this governing body, mayor, council members, city clerk, city attorney, city manager. They have a tough job. They have a bottom-line responsibility to make sure that this city is safe and well-managed, but they have an above-the-line consciousness. Help us not separate the soul of the saint from the soul of the community in which the saint lives. Help us to see that our heart is where our treasury is, and our treasury is where our heart is. So thank you for these men and women who sacrificed their time to love their community and their people. Place a hedge of protection around them, as you have from this, as you have in this wonderful city, one of the best cities in the world. So we thank you, God, for this day. It is the day that the Lord has made, and let us rejoice and be glad in it. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Pastor from Christ Our Redeemer AME Church. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in silent mode.
Thank you. City Council announcements for new items, council members with, or new items, council members would like to be introduced for future agendas. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, the first three are all police-related. First, last week was Chief John Lewis's one-year anniversary as chief of police. Congratulations to you, chief. We have our police appreciation breakfast tomorrow morning, and also, the police took first place in their Baker-to-Vegas race, which is phenomenal, and I'm, I appreciate you're not asking that I participate. I was also able to represent the city at the No Ruse Celebration in Irvine on Sunday, which was a great turnout. And then, very, very briefly, I applaud Brad Avery for hosting his first town hall last night.
Mr. Pieter? Mrs. Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a few announcements. The first, I don't, there's gonna be a slide that's coming up here, I believe. On April 1st, we're almost to April, organic compost giveaway. The city and CRNR Environmental Services will host a compost giveaway on Saturday, April 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00. Newport Beach residents can receive two free 30-pound bags of organic compost on a first-come, first-served basis, while supplies last. You may go to the Oasis Senior Center auxiliary parking lot at the corner of Marguerite and 5th in Corona Del Mar. Residents should bring the postcard mailed to them by CRNR for proof of residency. So that, go get your compost, that's really great. And the next item I have, I have a town hall next Monday, and I did attend Mr. Avery's town hall last night. Well done, it was great to see the citizens, residents of District 2. Mine is at Marina Park on April 3rd. I know, before anybody tells me, that we have, it's the Final Four basketball game, aye, aye, aye. But we, what we will do is have a TV in the ancillary room, adjacent room, volume down, so those who want to do, who can multitask a town hall meeting and watch the basketball game can do so. So we will provide for all kinds of entertainment. Finance committee meeting, Thursday, this Thursday at 3:00 p.m. Please join us for a discussion on items related to the 2017-18 proposed budget formulation. We're in the budget formulation period, and the continuing discussion, riveting of our unfunded pension liability. And I also want to just thank the community. About 200, mostly women, a few men, attended our Women in Newport Networking Forum, Community Forum, next door in the community room on March 16th. We are especially grateful to Supervisor Steele, who gave a heartfelt and compelling talk on why public service and community service of our citizens is a highly valued activity. And so I hope we've inspired women and men to learn about the many ways to serve our city. And I will ask the city clerk, when do the applications, what, when does the application period open for the open positions or council-appointed boards and commissions?
I'll be bringing that staff report in April, in order to do the committees, and then open that.
This is just a heads-up to everyone, get ready to fill out your applications, because we welcome them from all members of our community. Also, I do want to do a shout-out, special shout-out to community volunteer Dottie McDonald, who received a proclamation from Supervisor Steele. 88 years young, and still actively contributing and volunteering to our wonderful police department. And then I do have one other, one comment related to tonight's agenda, so I'll shift gears here. So, I'll shift gears here on a business matter. As some of you here tonight and residents at home may know, there is an ecclesiastical trial that is being, that began earlier today in Pasadena regarding the fate of our St. James the Great Church. I recognize this ecclesiastical trial is a religious matter that must be decided by the Episcopal Church and its congregation. However, a number of residents have reached out to me personally, asking for my support. I support the congregation and the many people living in our city that have benefited from the good work performed at St. James the Great. I have been in contact with Reverend Voorhees, and I have sent her a letter expressing my personal support for the congregation. I also plan on attending the ecclesiastical trial tomorrow as an observer and supporter of the congregation. It is my sincere hope that any future use at the church property continue to benefit the congregation and the residents of our city. And therefore, I support, the city manager has advised that item number 14 on tonight's agenda regarding St. James the Great will be pulled from tonight's agenda. Is that correct, Mr. Kiff? Yes. All right. So, thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
Since our last meeting, I have attended two committee meetings, the Santa Ana Flood Protection Committee meeting, and also attended Newport Bay Watershed Committee meeting. My, my learning curve is increasing, and I'm enjoying my involvement representing you on those committees. I also attended the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee meeting. I was invited to attend that, and it's, the committee has been revived. It didn't meet for quite a while, so there was a large group in attendance. Let's see, we had a Babo Island Improvement Association on the island a couple of Saturdays ago. A number of projects were talked about by staff, and I'd like to just express my appreciation to staff for an excellent job that was done that morning. And I, too, am planning, with the help of Tara Finnegan, Deputy City Manager, a town hall meeting. The focus will not be on Babo Island, though. It will be on the remainder of my district. And the reason for that is because Babo Island holds regular general membership meetings at which I'm a standard part of the agenda, and staff helps me out there if necessary. And then, on to matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. Is this the time to do that?
It is, yes.
Okay. I'd like to bring the Bayside Drive Traffic Calming Project back to council. We've had our second meeting of that group, and pretty much reached consensus on a direction in which I would like the council to become aware of and take action on. All right? Thank you.
Yes, thanks to Councilmember Dixon. I teed up a town hall meeting for District 2, and we did it over at the Mariners Branch Library, had about 75 people, and we had, I had great support from city staff and from our police department and some other experts, professionals. And I think our 75 people in attendance learned some, some good things about the district, increased their knowledge on some of the more controversial things, as we all did, and it became readily apparent that we need to do another town hall meeting in about three months. And then, this afternoon was a lunch, the Newport Harbor High School Mentor Program's 20th anniversary, and every year, they do a lunch to celebrate the mentors and the mentees, and I've been a part of the program for about four years, and it's an absolute joy to go to this. It just represents, for me, everything that's wonderful about our community, just people volunteering to mentor a young person, junior at Harbor, Harbor High, and spend some time with them, and, you know, maybe get them outside of their current family unit a little bit and be, be an adult with another perspective. So, but there was well over, I think, a couple hundred people there at least, and great testimonials from the, the mentees about their mentors. And then, what's really wild is all the learning that went on, on the part of the mentors. So, anyway, it was a wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few weeks ago, I went off to Sacramento and Washington, DC with our Public Works Head, Dave Webb, Harbor Resource Manager, Chris Miller, Councilman Avery, next to me here. And we, our directive was to try and work with the different agencies, Army Corps and such, for different techniques of dredging as well as funding for dredging. And this process is a long road, but, meaning I'm going to have, we're all going to have to go back next year and the prior year, most likely. Maybe I won't get elected and I won't have to go, but, no, I would, I was very impressed with our staff. They knew all, they guided us through it very well. It was quite something to see the capital, appropriately-named capital, as it's sitting on a pile of money that we all are begging for. So, the process that one goes through for that is quite daunting. I don't think there's a single soul in the city that's not doing the same thing we were doing. So, having said that, I, let's see, can't read my thing. I think that's it. Thank you.
I think your reelection slogan should be, "Don't send me to Washington." I think it may go really well. I have none. So, now we go on to matters which council members have previously requested be placed on future agendas. This is not a discussion item. It's clear to see if there are three council members required to bring back an item. We have two here, sort of related. I like to bifurcate them. The first is Councilman Hurdman, Hurdman's request to rename a park after Ralph Rothheim. So, at this time, would council members show their hands for support? All right. So, it looks like that's met. And then, the second request is similar. It's mine, to rename a park after John Wayne. So, please show hands. All right. Madam Clerk, public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 11. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes. All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be all enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Council, any items to pull from the consent calendar? Councilman O'Neil?
None.
Councilman Pieter? Councilwoman Dixon?
None.
Councilman Hurdman?
None.
Councilman Avery?
None.
Mayor Potem Duffield?
I have none.
Now, I'll be pulling item 3.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Before a motion is made, I would recommend you could move item 14 in the new recommended action to the consent calendar, and that recommended action is continue indefinitely.
Excellent. Do we have a motion?
I saw move.
One second.
Mayor Potem, would you like to articulate the motion?
Yeah, I move the balance of the consent calendars, item 1 through 11, with item 3 pulled by Mayor Muldoon.
Thank you. And incorporating the request of staff?
And incorporating item 14.
And I believe we have a second from Mr. Hurdman, so let's vote. Oh, thank you. Public comments on those items.
Just, just briefly, I believe there's some, maybe some recusals on item number 6.
Oh.
From who? Okay, one second.
I have, Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself from voting on item number 6.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I also need to recuse myself from this item.
Item 6?
Yes.
Okay.
I, myself, too, will be recusing on that item.
It's really, it doesn't have a, but it's a caution based on membership with Newport Harbor Yacht Club, but given that the previous item that dealt with the funding of this project, council members are just going ahead and recusing themselves from the item.
Okay. Do I have to amend the, the, the motion, or does that satisfy it? Does that satisfy it? All right, let's vote. Nope. I know. Scott, you want people to yell at you. Okay, public comments.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. For clarification, did I hear you say you're pulling number 3?
You are.
Okay. I was going to comment on that. I'll also comment on number 11, which is the General Plan Annual Status Report, including the housing element. The reason I wanted to comment on this, for those of you who were on the council or watched the meeting last November, when the former council was considering the approval of the Museum House project at the Orange County Museum of Art site, one of the council members, who the city manager has actually said researches things in Newport Beach better than anybody else, told us that, I believe this is correct, he told us that although some of the residents might not be in favor of adding more housing to Newport Beach, it was not up to the council. The council had to add housing because it's required by the state. Item 11 includes our annual report to the state about the status of our housing, and I was just curious if in this report, we are actually saying or acknowledging that we're actually 100 units behind in meeting state-mandated housing requirements. I don't believe it says that, and I don't believe that we are, but if I'm incorrect about that, I would be happy to be corrected. And then, item number 14, which is the St. James Church issue, which I take it is now on the consent calendar.
No. No? Continued indefinitely. Oh, it's within the motion. Yes, it's now, it's not on consent calendar. It's been added to the motion.
Yes. Oh, I, I just have a brief comment about that. In, in my opinion, although there is no religious issue involved, from the city government's point of view, it's fundamentally a land use issue. And the reason the church thought that they could make more money, or make money off of it by selling it for housing development, assumed that they had some right to build housing, and it's not zoned for that in our current zoning, and there is no, I don't want to make a pun here, there is no God-given right that you can do something other than what the general plan says. So, the expectation that the church could make money off of it, just as the museum people thought they could make money off those properties, that they're not realistic expectations. Thank you.
Jim, I was really hoping you were going to incorporate the Immaculate Conception of 100 units to the St. James issue. I really missed an opportunity there. Any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Megan Delaney. I'm a member, actually, of the Newport Mooring Association. I'm on the board. I want to just pose a question to Mayor Muldoon and the council. Since you've polled...
Yep. So, there isn't, there's a time for that on, on non-agenda items. Right now, we're discussing simply the issues that were on the consent calendar and 14. So, if that comment does not pertain to one of the consent calendar items, which is in the, it's a staff report issue, I'll give you another opportunity to speak, and I'll prompt you.
Then, just a point of clarification for me and the other people that are here that have been working item number 3 for many years. Since this is the public comment portion for item number 3, or have I misunderstood that?
Yes, since I polled it.
Okay.
Then, we'll do it again. Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, seen none. Finally, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item number 4, ordinance number 2017-5, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, reauthorizing the public educational and government, governmental fee on state video franchises operating within the City of Newport Beach. I'll go ahead and vote, council, or is it not showing on your screen? Start voting again. There we go. Okay. I think I saw it real briefly, but let me just clarify. Councilmember Pieter, you're yes? The motion carries unanimously, 7-0. There it is.
Thank you. Now, turning to item 3, I, actually, I don't, I did not pull this item to require a staff report on it or any discussion on the matter, other than I would like to make a motion to move the staff report, only with the change of keeping the existing transfer rate in place, which, Mr. Miller, you can chime in on what the proposed increase is and what the existing is right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to find the exact wording, but it is currently at, pardon me, currently at 50% of the annual mooring fee, and we are proposing, based on direction from the last council meeting, to increase that to 75% of the annual mooring fee.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Or request to speak?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, we, we've made a major, major change in the mooring through this proposed, or proposed ordinance or modification, and we're really giving a substantial leasehold-type property right to the mooring rather than a rental-type of a distinction on the mooring. So, it allows them to transfer, and we abolish our waiting list, and, and we do these things. You know, the amount of money that you're talking about, it's 250 bucks. It's not the end of the world. I actually was in favor of doing a 10% fee when we had our study session. I'm not in favor of reducing this part. And the other thing that I would comment, though, is that if you're going to change this, one of the other things I suggest is to not limit your transfers to two per year, and allow them to be whatever the market bears. They obviously have to pay the fee each time that happens, but I don't know why there's an arbitrary limit to do it on whatever annual basis. And then, there was another comment that came up by one of our constituents, talking about the ability to lease your mooring out. So, if you don't have a boat there, you have a mooring. Right now, the, the rule says you can't lease it past, I think it's 30 days. And so, I guess the question is, why shouldn't they be able to lease it for a longer period of time? And I don't know if the city wants to sit there and restrict the rent amount, but it just seems like it's, we've eliminated the waiting list, we've eliminated a lot of the other restrictions on it. You know, I'm not looking for the guys to come in, buy them, and, and lease them out and make money on them, but they are paying for them. And so, to have someone else pay for that, I don't know, it just seems like a distinction. So, I'd, I'd propose amending your motion. Well, I'm sorry, you haven't actually made your motion. I propose to move the approval.
I did, I did make my motion.
You say you did? I'll second it, and I'd like to amend it to include a removal of the restriction on the number of times you can transfer per year. If that's okay with the maker of the motion. Otherwise, I'll just make it as a proposed amendment.
Please make it as proposed amendment.
Okay. I propose to substitute motion to include with the motion that you're proposing to eliminate the number of times you can transfer per year.
All right. Will you be including the restriction on short term?
Not right now.
Okay.
One, one procedural issue, just quickly. You don't have a second for your motion yet, so is there a second?
I seconded it.
You seconded it, okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Councilman Duffield?
Well, if I have this wrong, let me know, but originally, what brought this all up many, many years ago was the fact that there was a possibility that those, that there were folks out there who could make a profit doing this. So, one of the ways to eliminate that was to limit the amount of times that you can transfer mooring. So, I think in the eyes of the, am I, am I wrong here? Did you follow me? So, so, in the eyes of the, the agency, oh, God, I'm losing it. What's the name of it? Not the Thailand, Thailand? State Lands Commission. I think we'd be doing a, opening up a can of worms, because what, what we're trying to say to the State Lands is, look, we're not doing this for profit. So, I just throw that to the council.
Thank, is there a, before we continue the debate, just for the sake... Thank, is there a, before we continue the debate, just for the sake of confusion or clarity, is there a second on Mr. Piattar's proposed amendment? I see none, okay. Councilwoman Dixon.
Listen, just for purposes of edification, then, since that motion didn't pass, I'm curious, Mr. Miller, what, why, if you could just explain why there is a limit, and that's been going on for many decades?
Councilmember Duffy described it perfectly. Currently, currently proposed is a one transfer per year per mooring. So, just once.
Not two? It's just one?
Correct.
Okay.
Not two. Two is, not to confuse the matter, but two is how it currently is written in our existing code until the year 2020.
Okay. And then we change it to one?
And now we're changing it to one per year.
Year. Okay. And then, second question, what was the recommendation of the harbor commission on the transfer fee?
75% of the annual permit fee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery.
Yes, that's right, it was 75% from the harbor commission, and it was also, we had a lot of input from the mooring permittees and from the Newport Mooring Association at the time. The, the, at the economic run-up of like 2005, '06, '07, there was a little bit of frothiness in the mooring market, and so they were just, they were escalating in value like everything else was, so there was some trading, but by and large, nobody's making money, by and large, by a large degree, nobody's made any money on the moorings. Someone might have held one for 15 years, and maybe it sold for a few thousand dollars, or maybe $10,000 over, but compared to their maintenance and all the things that go with owning a mooring, there was no one making a lot of money. And that's true today, of course, but that was there because of this sort of run-up, and so it's good that it's there again, in case we have another situation where we have steep appreciation in the economy of assets. It would sort of tamp that down a bit.
Thank you. Seeing other speakers at this time, I just like to articulate why I made this adjustment. The increase is effectively similar to a tax increase, because it's not justified by an increase in administrative costs, so I would just prefer to leave that transfer rate as is, but I'm very happy to see the mooring users have their rights restored to have the leasehold interest in that mooring, and the mooring users bring up great value to the harbor, and it is a low-income alternative to water access compared to private piers and docks. So I'm happy to see Newport Beach make boating as affordable as it can be. Of course, we know boating cannot be that affordable, but as affordable as it can be. So I'm grateful to Mr. Piattar for seconding that motion, and I see that, would I comment as well, again?
Just a comment, and again, I supported the 10%. You're talking about it being a tax, I look at it as being profit-sharing. So rather than preventing people from making a profit, all you're saying is, is that the city would share in whatever appreciation there happens to be in the moorings. So I don't look at it as a tax, I look at it as a shared profit, and that's why I was encouraging with the 10% rather than a fixed fee. But I'll support your proposal at 50%.
Do I see any other comments on this item? Ms. Hurdman? So the clarification was, I move to approve staff report as written, only to amend the recommendation of a 75% transfer fee.
That's what I understood, yes.
Down to 50, which is essentially the way it's been.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Oh, Mr. Piattar seconded.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, but I know how you're going to vote now.
Sorry. It's been so long.
All right, thank you. It sounds like based on Mayor Potem Duffield's suggestion, we are done debating this. Public comments.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. My position on this, whatever policy you're trying to act is enact, is that the ordinance is not quite ready to be adopted yet. We have these red line copies in the lobby, still more red line copies. At your meeting on February 28th, I thought that you had all agreed that you wanted the, as an example of the last minute changes, I thought you had all agreed that you wanted the transfer prices to be posted on a website, probably the city's, maybe something else. I would point out the first page, the red line copy down here in blue, it now just says that the harbor resources manager may list the transfer price. That doesn't sound like what you were trying to enact to me. And moreover, I tried reading parts of the long, clean copy that you have here, that this has gone through a number of, it's a long piece of legislation that's gone through a number of changes over the years. Not too many years ago, the city council was working towards phasing out the idea of having transfers, private transfers. Now you're phasing it back in, and it's kind of a quite mixed-up mishmash of what you have here. You had very clear policy objectives on February 28th that you saw. The actual implementation of them here is not at all clear, and if you read it literally in two places, it says you cannot transfer moorings. Private transfers are not allowed. In other places, it seems to say that they are. So I just think this needs some more work before you introduce it, and sending it on to a second reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? All right, seen none. Unless there's a request to speak, Mr. O'Neil.
Very briefly, Mr. Mosher makes a good point. I would ask, as a friendly amendment, that the word "may" turn into "shall" in number nine, as amended.
All right, so with that amendment, except the friendly amendment accepted as proposed, shall we vote on my original motion?
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2017-7, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Newport Beach Municipal Code Title 17 relating to moorings. With council members, Avery and Dixon voting no, the motion carries 5-2.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items?
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, I think you know my name by now, but if you missed it, it's Jim Mosher. And I have a, I guess it's a non-agenda item, but I actually want to comment on agenda item, Roman numeral 13, which is the routine you go through about putting agenda items on the agenda. First comment, I wanted to respectfully tell you that it clearly is an agenda item on the agenda, and when you raise your hands, the council clearly is giving direction to somebody to do something. And I would respectfully suggest that the Brown Act requires that when the council is taking action like that, the public has to be given an opportunity to give you our two cents as to whether we think the action should go one way or another. So it's on the agenda, there should be public comment about that preceding your straw vote or whatever it is that you do. The second thing I wanted to inform you about is your rights and responsibilities as council members under the Brown Act in connection with items of this sort, putting items on the agenda. This came to my attention, I noticed that there was a news article in this last week about a dispute going on in the city council, I believe it's in the city of El Cajon, which recently changed to electing their council members by district. And soon after doing that, they were changing to a system similar to this, that to put something on the agenda, you had to get agreement from the other council members. And one of the council members from a district apparently not too popular was complaining that that essentially was cutting him out and his constituents from having any opportunity for their items to be discussed by the council as a whole, because he could never get the votes to have his items put on. So there's something kind of basically wrong with this whole procedure, and he was pointing out, if you look carefully at the Brown Act, it says you don't need to go through this routine. The Brown Act says, and he was pointing out, if you read it literally, it says that a member or the body as a whole can take action to put an item on the agenda, and the fact that they're going to be voting to do that, or taking action to do that, itself does not have to be on the agenda. So it's supposed to be true that any single council member, if you read the Brown Act, should just be able to say, I want something to be on the agenda, and that should happen. And in the city of El Cajon, not allowing that to happen was stifling and preventing public discussion of items that people wanted to have discussed. It certainly makes it very difficult here in Newport Beach to discuss them in a timely fashion, because you have to go through this complicated routine of asking at one meeting, voting at another. I think the whole thing could be dispensed with, and you're probably not respecting your rights as individuals under the Brown Act that you have as council members, to bring an issue to public discussion without going through something like this. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? All right, seen none. All reports from city council on committee activities. Mr. O'Neil.
None.
Mr. Piattar. Mrs. Dixon.
None.
Mr. Hurdman.
I already gave mine.
Thank you. Mr. Avery?
None.
Mayor Potem Duffield. All right, on to the public hearings. Staff?
I need Dan to come on up. So this first item, item 12, is authorization to issue obligations by the California Enterprise Development Authority to benefit the Discovery Science Center of Orange County and its operations at Ocean Quest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So as you know, the government is able to issue debt on behalf of private entities on a tax-exempt basis. The IRS code requires for that entity to have the issuer approve the debt, which is not us, it's a separate entity. But since the debt obligation would be secured by property within our jurisdiction, the Discovery Science Center, the new owner of Explorer Ocean, is looking for our permission to restructure some existing debt. It's in total about $6 million through a private placement, and if you have any questions about that transaction, otherwise, we are looking for you to authorize their request to issue bonds in the name of a perceived public benefit in our community on a tax-exempt basis.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Dan. Just a couple of quick questions. Is there any liability to the city of Newport Beach?
There is not.
Is there any cost to the city of Newport Beach?
There is not.
Is there any way whatsoever that there could be any residual impact financially on the city of Newport Beach?
There is not. The only way would be if we were the actual issuer itself, and for some reason, Discovery Science Center defaulted on the debt obligation itself. $6 million is a trivial amount to the Discovery Science Center.
But we're not the issuer.
We're not the issuer, so not likely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the dais? Would you explain what happens if there's a default?
So, if there were a default, the Discovery Science Center would be responsible for that, for the debt. If we happen to be the issuer, which we are not, it could, it would otherwise perhaps tarnish our name, because somebody in the capital markets may say, well, is this a Newport Beach bond or not, even though that we weren't the guarantor. In this particular case, they were issuing through another governmental agency, and so we, they're only seeking our approval to issue bonds because it's within our jurisdiction.
Oh, you said if there's a default, the party that's borrowing would be responsible?
Correct.
Okay. What if the party that's borrowing is not able to meet that obligation?
Then they're just bonds that aren't, that, I know they're junk bonds, but they're bonds that did not successfully have any backing for them, and the bondholders lose the money.
So there are no consequences to see in Newport Beach?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the dais? Going out to the public, public comments.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. We went through this a month or so ago with regard to Uptown Newport. I thought it was inappropriate at the time to be giving the private backers in a completely private real estate development the advantage of tax-free status. In this case, it is a cultural, educational institution, it seems a little bit more worthy of it, but I think we should have a clear idea of what the money is intended for, and I can't quite tell from the staff report, and I couldn't quite tell from the report, is this entirely to cover construction? It says it covers acquisition, construction, development, renovation, and furnishing, and equipping of facilities. Is this to cover money that's already owed on development that's already been executed? Or are the $6 million a plan for future additional development? It seems like it's a relevant question. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other public comments in the public? Yeah, please feel free to come forward and... If you like.
All right, you got two of us here. Good evening. My name's Joe Adams, I'm the president of Discovery Science Center, and thank you for hearing us out, Mayor, and esteemed colleagues here of the council. We're excited. Cube's excited to be here in Newport. We're excited to bring our brand, and our kids, and our science know-how right there to the harbor. We're going to be working on champions for kids to become environmental champions, to take STEM and apply that to what they're learning in the classrooms, and also to have a healthier living through all the activities that go on there at the harbor and the site. And so what's happening, quite easily, is that we're refinancing the property, we're getting the better interest rates. With the savings on the $6 million and the changing of the interest rate through this bond with your approval, it goes straight to programming. We're going to be able to add more kids on field trips, we're going to be able to add more hands-on activities inside the site, which it needs. And so that's exactly what we're doing, is putting more programs, not construction, it's putting it right into use for the mission that the Science Center is there to achieve.
Thank you.
I'm Sam Ballasie with Q-TAC Rock, we're counsel on the transaction, and just for clarification, this is a commercial loan, there are no public bonds, we're not issuing bonds. It's basically a bank loan, but because they're a 501(c)(3), they're eligible to borrow on a tax-exempt basis, just like the city does, and we're basically facilitating the tax-exempt financing. So purely a loan from a bank to the Discovery Science Center, the city has no obligations, financial or otherwise. Even the issuer doesn't really have any obligations. If there's a default, the bank has recourse to the property, other assets, and that's pretty much the end of it.
And this is the same property that the city of Newport Beach sold to you?
This is the property that is the old Explorer Ocean property, which is the Fun Zone location.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Any other public comments on this item? All right, bringing it back to council. Any discussion or motion? Oh, Mr. O'Neil, yes.
I move approval of the staff report.
I second.
All right. Any other requests? Seen none, let's vote.
With Mayor Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
All right, on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, item number 13, we do have staff here to make a presentation if you'd like one. I just, I put this on current business because it's a high-dollar item.
All right, are there any requests for a staff report from the council?
I move support of this item.
And I'll second it.
All right. Before we vote, public comments. Before we vote, public comments?
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. This item, since the title was not mentioned, is, involves paying, what is it, $523,000 to purchase a sewer cleaning truck. The obvious question that comes to mind about this, down in the funding requirements, it says that the equipment will be expensed from the Equipment Replacement Fund of the Municipal Operations Department. We have heard in past years that the sewer fund is not solvent, so I think it's reasonable to ask if the Sewer Enterprise Fund has been paying into this Equipment Replacement Fund, or if it's the general fund that is going to be buying the sewer truck. And I would point out that the last time we bought a sewer truck was less than a year ago, June 14th, 2016, at which time the council approved spending slightly under $500,000 for a 700-gallon sewer cleaning truck, much smaller than this one. This one is many times larger than that. The one last year was actually smaller than one that the Costa Mesa Sanitary District had recently purchased for a smaller price. So we were paying more for a smaller machine. And the reason offered at that time was because Newport Beach had many small streets, so we needed a small sewer cleaning apparatus to service those small streets. This one seems to be gigantic, much bigger even than the Costa Mesa one, so I'm wondering if this is one that is now only going to service the wide streets or big parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm curious as well. Mr. Campbell, do you want to answer that question?
Mayor, members of council. It's a larger one. It's our primary or major sewer cleaning truck. Yes, it can't get around on the areas of Babo Island and Baboa, some of the narrower areas of Baboa, but yeah, on regular residential streets, wide-open areas, it can get around. The current truck is 13 years old and has averaged over 11,000 miles a year without leaving the city. It's, of the trucks in mod, it's the highest mileage, highest usage truck, and it's very important to keeping sewer lines clean, wet wells cleaned, and sewage out of the harbor.
Great, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, back to council. Mr. O'Neil.
Real briefly, two quick things. One, I commend staff for being involved in the National Joint Powers Alliance to save the city money by consolidating with many others, so we can get this truck at a much lower rate than we would if we were out on our own bid. And then to Mr. Mosher's comment about the Internal Services Fund on the vehicle replacement, I can just tell you, fellow councilmembers, this is, this is one of those fiscal prudence, long-term planning items that you'll see in the budget coming up, that staff and previous councils have done a phenomenal job of ensuring not just funding, but funding appropriately for the long haul, so that we don't have a massive $500,000 hit all at once, but instead fund over a period of time. So on both items, I commend staff.
Thank you. Any other comments from the dais? All right, is there a motion? Who made that motion, remind me?
I did.
Okay. Seconded by?
Me.
All right, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Item 14 was set out. Item 15?
So, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I would recommend a brief staff report on this one. It does involve something that's, I know, important to Councilmember Dixon and her district, so Mark McCloyevic, sorry, Tony Bryan will give that presentation briefly, if that's okay with you guys. Back up here. Yes, Mayor Muldoon, city councilmembers, this is an award for a construction contract for our annual traffic signal rehabilitation project. In this particular case, it's not just rehabilitation of two traffic signals, which is our typical program. We're also improving and including two rapid-flashing beacon installations in the city, and we're removing a crosswalk as part of that installation. So this project features rehabilitation of two traffic signals, as I mentioned, at Jamboree Road in Bison and Newport Center Drive at Santa Rosa. Within Newport Center, we're going to be changing out all of the street name signs at the traffic signals to the new blue street name sign with the city's sale logo. And we will be installing two rectangular rapid-flashing beacons at East Bluff-Alba, which is across from Coronetamar High School, and at Via Lido and Via Porto near Lido Marina Village. And in conjunction with that, we'll be removing, there is two-stripe sidewalk, two-stripped crosswalks at Via Lido and Via Porto. We'll be removing one of those as part of that flashing beacon project. So for those of you that have not seen the ones that are existing in the city, and we have three today, two on West Cliff, one next to Newport Harbor High School, this is what they look like. The flashing beacon, two lights in the middle, and they're placed on either side of the roadway at the crosswalk. The two locations, again, there's one near Coronetamar High School that's on East Bluff, and it's just north of Alba, and it's adjacent to a student drop-off area. A lot of students are dropped off there, and then they use that crosswalk to walk across East Bluff to the high school. So this is a good location for a new rapid-flashing beacon. And then the other location is on Via Lido at Via Porto in the Lido Marina Village area, where we'll be installing a new rapid-flashing beacon, and then in conjunction, because there are two crosswalks adjacent to each other, removing one of the crosswalks. And part of that is that from a vehicle code standpoint, we're required to, when a crosswalk is removed, we're required to have a public hearing. So we posted the site 30 days in advance to notice the public that we were going to be removing the crosswalk at that location, and we had not received any comments regarding the removal of that crosswalk. So we're bringing that item to you tonight as part of the motion for approval. And also, since 4:00 PM on March 28th, we've had no new comments on that item.
Before we move on, and I see Councilwoman Dixon probably wants to speak to this, so I'll just give her the floor.
Just want to clarify specifically on the crosswalk that will be removed. Could you go back to that image, please? So as you're driving onto Via Lido, it'll be the first crosswalk.
If you're driving from Newport Boulevard, you're driving towards Lido Isle, it is that second crosswalk.
Oh, it's the second?
Right.
That will be removed?
That will be removed.
Oh, excuse me, yes, that's my understanding. As we have gotten correspondence from various residents in the last few days, you are, I just want to clarify, you are currently doing a Peninsula Crosswalk Audit Survey, is that correct?
That is correct.
So there are the other crosswalks on the Lido, in the Lido area, Lido Village area, will be looked at as well, because there's another one down at Via Malaga, where I'm hearing a lot of comment about that crosswalk as well.
Right. That particular crosswalk is not in the study currently, but we can review that particular crosswalk individually.
I think we've heightened everyone's awareness, and there's just a lot more. I mean, the good news is, there's been a lot more pedestrian and traffic on Lido because of the increased economic activity, which is a good thing, but the bad thing is that there's a lot of jaywalking and a lot of people not seeing people in crosswalks and that type of thing. So I think we should just look at the whole Via Lido area there would be good, and your subsequent study, or the study that's currently going on.
We can do that.
Thank you.
And as we had just mentioned, the Baboa Peninsula Crosswalk Study, we're in the process of completing the draft of that report. We looked at 36 uncontrolled crosswalks along the entire peninsula, and we've collected the pedestrian count data, and we've been completing the engineering analysis of that work. And we will be coming back in the draft study with some recommendations for some crosswalk improvements and safety enhancements. So that could carry over into looking at some locations on Via Lido. And so we're planning to have that draft study completed for review in late spring. This particular project, this traffic signal rehab project, the construction would be starting in spring, it would go through the fall. The first order of work would be the rapid-flashing beacons. We want to have the one on Via Lido in before the end of May, and then we want to actually do the work up near Coronetamar High School during the summer break, which is the best time to do it, stay out of the high school traffic. And then we will follow through with the remainder of the traffic signal rehab work, because generally there's long lead times on getting the equipment. So that's the project, and we're bringing it to you tonight for the award of contract.
Thank you. Any questions from the dais? All right.
I'll move approval.
Okay. Public comments?
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name one last time is Jim Mosher. And my only comment on this, I believe the installation we were shown a photograph of looked like the one at West Cliff, and that one has not only a flashing beacon on the pole with the arrow pointing to the crosswalk, but it has in-pavement flashing lights. And I think many people have the intuition that those do better protection to the pedestrians crossing the street. I have the impression that these are only flashing lights on a pole and will not have the flashing lights in the pavement, and I think our city staff has some reason for disfavoring that configuration with lights in the pavement, but I would hope they could remind the public of what their reasoning is about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, just to clarify, these new installations are just the rapid-flashing beacon itself. There's no lights in the pavement. The ones that we do have on West Cliff, they do not have the lights in the pavement as well. We only have one location currently in the city that does have the flashing crosswalk, the lighting in the pavement. That's on Coast Highway at Orchid, and that's the only one we have in the city. At this point, we don't have any plans to do further in-pavement lighted crosswalks. So we're moving ahead with these, these different flashing beacon crosswalks.
And the beacon is a pole in the right-of-way?
It, it is. It's a simple pole, solar-generated power, and fairly straightforward to install.
Thank you.
Both sides of the street, right?
Correct.
In both directions.
In both directions. You can see the flashing light on both sides and from both sides.
Very good. Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, let's vote. Unless there's any requests to discuss, let's vote on the motion.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with a prevailing side.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm having buyer's remorse. I'd like to move to reconsider item number three.
Ah, you would do that. All right.
I'll second.
Right now. I'd like to, oh, we have to vote on reconsideration before we can vote on a revised motion?
We do.
I'll, I'll speak to it. I'd like to approve it as the Harbor Commission recommended it with a 75% of the annual fee for the transfer.
All right. Piattar for a tax increase. Mr. O'Neil?
No, profit hearing.
I'll second Mr. Piattar's motion, because I'd like to hear the rationale for Ms. Dixon and Mr. Avery voting no.
Fair enough. Let's vote.
Whether we will reconsider.
With Mayor Muldoon and Mayor Potem Duffield voting no, the motion carries 5-2.
All right, bringing the item back up for reconsideration.
So I'll move staff recommendation with the 75% of the annual fee.
I second.
Who's the second from?
I second it.
Okay. That was a jinx there. Okay. Assuming there's, did you want to hear from staff, or you want to just go ahead and vote? It sounds like you made up your mind already, Mr. Piattar. I thought, is that Mr. O'Neil, you want to hear from staff? Oh, Mr. Avery? Yes.
Well, in this mooring subcommittee that went on for quite a while, we had a lot of participation, the number moved back and forth, and there were different ways to come to it. But ultimately, we settled on, and the mooring association, well, not the, I shouldn't say the mooring association, everyone in the audience, we, I think we had general agreement on 100% of, basically, 100% instead of 75. And then, then it got moved in a second meeting over Marina Park, not in the last meeting of Marina Park, to, this was maybe a month and a half ago, two months ago, to 50, 50%. Or no, to, to 75. So it's, it's bounced around, but the last, and what I was doing is just supporting the last Harbor Commission vote on 75%. And that was with a full audience of mooring permities. And I think they basically, I believe they felt that that was a fair conclusion, and unfortunately, they're not here to say much there. So that was our, that was the Harbor Commission's last vote on it, and I just wanted to support that and the work that they did.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil, is that, is that your request?
All right, so I like to jest with my good friend Scott Piattar, but I will be voting no, because I believe those mooring holders were so grateful to have returned what was taken from them in at least hold interest. It's not a fee simple property, right? At least hold interest in the ridiculously higher rates that were set that were whittled down. I'm sure they're, they're very grateful, and they're agreeable to accept what the powers that be give them, but I, for one, don't believe in increasing taxes and fees in the city, and especially a city as well-heeled as we are for low-income boat access. So that's why I will be voting against this.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other side comment on this. It was brought up by Mr. Ousian that there's about, excuse me, about 80,000, he thought, of rental income every year by Harbor Patrol and soon-to-be city of renting empty mooring places for transient boaters. And I would love to see all or part, or half or maybe even all of it used to provide additional services to the mooring owners. Things like wash-off places, bilge pump-out places, opportunities for mechanics to come and work on boats. Perhaps all this can be staged at Marina Park. So I'd like to have that maybe come back to the council sometime to, to do that.
Fair enough. Yeah, we think we can do that. Any other comments on this before we vote? Mr. Avery?
I just wanted to acknowledge Councilman Piattar's request, and to say that I think there is, that I do think we, we need to provide more services, and one of the things that we're trying to do right now is a bilge pump-out station, which will help quite a bit. It's very important for not only the mooring holders, but they will definitely benefit by it. So I think we're going to have a number of things coming online in the future we could discuss that will benefit the mooring permities, and, and we will need recovery of those, of those funds to help pay for it. So we'll have to line those out for you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the dais? Public comments? Let's go and have public comments. I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, I have always been a little unclear how motions for reconsideration work. There have not been too many of them. If this was going to, the people who were interested in this agenda item, as you've noticed, have left. They thought the matter was settled. Had this come up for reconsideration at the next meeting, the vote for reconsideration would mean it would go back on the agenda. So I'm wondering, now that you have voted to reconsider the matter, whether that vote to reconsideration meant actually that you're going to bring the item back for another vote on the agenda at the next meeting? vote on the agenda at the next meeting, so that people interested in this will know that you might be changing your mind and can persuade you one way or the other. That, that had been my understanding of how a motion for reconsideration worked, not that late at night you could suddenly reverse with the public thought, but only that you could reconsider it at the next meeting if you voted to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we doing this correctly, Mr. Harp?
Yes, it's appropriate to have the matter considered this evening, and in any event, we'll come back for second reading at the next meeting.
And I'm of the opinion that although I think they'd prefer my proposal, they'd be very happy with what we're doing in general, the folks who are here, but they still have an opportunity to speak at the second reading. So let's, let's call it a vote.
Who are we missing?
Hit it before Dave could vote.
Oh, sorry, we'll do that one more time.
Okay.
Okay, do it one more time, please.
Sorry, guys, thank you.
Mayor, one more time, please. With Mayor Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
All right. So now that we've done that, are there any, there are no other items on this matter, correct? The motion to reconsider has been considered, and we're now, we're going to adjourn. Why don't we go first with Councilman O'Neil, like to recognize a past citizen?
Corona Del Mar resident Marilyn Broughton was born on January 31st, 1945. She was joined on that same date by her identical sisters, Newport Beach resident Evelyn Dumars and Artie Chaffee. Broughton attended Northern Arizona University in Flagstaff. After graduation, she became a nurse and eventually worked in the Pacemaker Center at Hoag Hospital, and joined CERT after retirement. She married George Broughton, who passed a few years ago. She and her sister Evelyn were often called the twins by those who served through CERT. Marilyn commented recently, before she passed, that she felt the CERT program was something important and worthy of her time, also rewarding and a fun way to meet people. She and Evelyn have donated more than 10,000 volunteer hours over the past several years, assisting with the CERT program, disaster preparedness outreach, helping out with events and more. They have volunteered for more than 10 events a year on average. Newport Beach CERT Coordinator Matt Brisbaugh said recently that Marilyn and Evelyn, quote, "are the epitome of everything that's right with the CERT program." They average between 1,500 and 2,000 hours volunteer time each year, which is equivalent to a full-time employee. Marilyn passed on March 18th and will be dearly missed. A celebration of life will be held April 28th at 11:30 AM at Calvary Church in Santa Ana. All Newport Beach CERT volunteers are welcome, and per the request of family, encouraged to wear their green vests.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Duffield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Longtime Newport Beach resident Bill Ficker passed away on March 13th. Bill was born and raised in Pomona and moved to Newport Beach in 1953. He was an internationally renowned yachtsman and won the Americas Cup at the helm of Intrepid. Bill was also a Star Class World Champion in 1958, and he won the Congressional Cup in 1974. He was inducted into the Americas Cup Hall of Fame in '93, and then National Sailing Hall of Fame in 2016. Since I am a sailor, Bill Ficker to me could easily be categorized as a Michael Jordan of our sport. He was also the very last, very last of the gentleman yachtsmen. By that I mean sailing was a sport to him because his family and work came first. Today, guys that win major sailing events are professionals, meaning they do it seven days a week, and sailing is work. Families are put aside due to the intense competition. And don't get me wrong, Bill was very close to being a pro sailor, due to his hard practicing and tuning of his crafts. People back then thought he was a little too into it, but Bill wanted to win, and like the motto said, "Ficker is quicker," and that's how he did it. He pushed the envelope every way he could to get an edge. Being asked to sail with him in his last major regatta was one of the high points of my sailing career. I couldn't believe my ears when I was asked to crew in the Congressional Cup with him in 1974, the year after he won the Americas Cup. His crew was used to his exhaustive training, and the thought of another campaign like Bill would put together was the last thing in their minds. So a deal was struck by a local sailor and crew member of Bill's, George Twist, that there be no practice whatsoever. The Congressional Cup is second in match racing to the Americas Cup, and so the idea of not preparing was impossible to grasp. Bill drove our boat around the course to a 9-0 undefeated Congressional Cup win that year, and it was one of the last major regattas he participated in. So I guess practicing isn't everything. But Newport Beach is lucky to call Bill Ficker a local. The list is incredibly short. That includes winning the Americas Cup, the Star Worlds, and the Congressional Cup. Bill had a full life outside sailing, the sailing world as well. He was a graduate of the University of California, Berkeley, and became a well-respected architect. He once co-owned a firm with William Pereira, and he also led the Ficker Group. Later in his career, he continued his education at Harvard University. Bill was a member of the Newport Harbor Yacht Club and was a former Newport Beach Planning Commissioner and Citizen of the Year. He is survived by his wife of 63 years, Barbara, their daughter Dionne McDonald, son-in-law Peter McDonald, and grandson Tyler McDonald.
Thank you for bringing those memorials. Tonight, though, I would like us to adjourn in memory of my dad, the love of my mother's life, and my best friend, John Ryan. We adjourn.